Yeah, we'll uh, I'll do a call to order and then roll call and then we'll do introductions. Alright, you do uh, see, we'll call the special work session to order Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at six-ten P M. Uh, roll call.
Mayor Attorney Doug Ewing.
Here.
Brad Alfinger.
Here.
Alex Esquivel, absent. Doctor Pam Sardo.
Here.
Gary Chappell.
Here.
Alright, we'll, before we start, we'll go around the table and introduce some mayor attorney, so.
Mayor Pro Tem Doug Ewing.
Uh, Gary Chappell, Police Five.
Chief of Police Jeff Graham.
Rob Dillard, City Attorney.
Josh Bethke, Attorney for the Mud.
Mindy Kaney, Attorney for the Mud.
Micah Phelps, President for the Mud.
Jeff Tozer, Vice President of the Mud.
Michael Clifton, just President of the Mud.
Brandon Ledbetter, Secretary of the Mud.
Gabrielle CP Bone, just Assistant to.
Pam Sardo, Alderwoman.
Brett Alfinger, Council.
Lisa Palomba, City Administrator.
Alright, um, we got uh, kind of a work session agenda. Um, basically, we're just here with the Mud to discuss uh, police operations, expectations for patrol, emergency response services, related fees, contract terms, um, with the Mud District and um, obviously, we have the board and the attorneys here. There's to be no action tonight. Um, you have a mic down there that, um, but I'm basically gonna turn the floor over to you and, and kinda let you start with.
Yeah, I'll get us started here. Again, Josh Bethke. There we go. Uh, I'll get us started here. Josh Bethke with Coats Rose. Um, just to kinda set the stage, give a little bit of history of kinda what brought us here today, and then I'll turn it over to Micah to have additional comments from there. Uh, so back in, I think, twenty fifteen, there was a development agreement between the original landowner and the city, um, that applied to this property pursuant to the Second Amendment to that development agreement, contemplated the city providing uh, public safety services to the boundaries of the district, to the property and the residents, uh, within the boundaries of the district. And at the time, it said, uh, city would charge twenty-two dollars per home per month, um, subject to future increases based on actual cost of service. Um, I believe for some time, the city was charging the twenty-two dollars per home per month on the water bills, um, to the residents in the, in the district. And then, at some point later down the line, uh, city came and said they're gonna, we'd like to increase by five dollars. Um, would the board consider taking on some of that cost so, to alleviate some of the burden on the residents? At that time, the district did agree to absorb five dollars of that cost. Um, so it was five dollars to the district, twenty-two dollars directly to the residents. And then, uh, subsequent to that, there was another eight-dollar increase and the district denied taking on that additional obligation. And so, thirty dollars was being charged to the residents and directly for, by the city, and five dollars, um, on the Mud's bills. And so, from there, there's been talks of increases, again, additional needs by the city. Um, and so, the district has had some concerns with the service that's being provided, um, as well as the cost and some of the increases. And so, from there, we've wanted to come to the table with you guys to see if we could all talk, kinda put it all out there. What are the issues from the district's perspective, from these board members, um, who, you know, have a vested interest in the district and live out there, as well as, uh, what are some ways that we can address those concerns? From the city's perspective, make sure everybody on council is aware, um, so everyone just kind of is on the same page, and so that we can all work forward, uh, move forward together. Obviously, there's a lot of residents, it's a big district that's out here in your backyard, and so, we wanna see how we can all come to the table and work together, uh, moving forward. So with that, I'll kinda turn it over to Micah to address, um, from the board's perspective, uh, what their issues are and goals are and things that we could talk about in this work session. Yeah, I, I didn't mention the specific dollar amount, but recently, it's been told to us that they're going from the thirty-five-dollar total amount to now seventy-seven and some change, uh, based on a study that was performed by the city. Um, so obviously, in conjunction with that increase, quite a significant increase from the previous cost that, uh, was being charged to the residents and to the district, um, leading to this conversation as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Josh. Uh, Micah, I'm the President of our Mud District, um, and then I will kinda turn it over to my colleagues as well to kind of all discuss through. Um, obviously, I came before y'all about a couple weeks ago, um, and asked for this meeting today. Um, kinda laid out some of the expectations and the issues that we were running into, um, and also wanna kinda summarize as to like how we landed here today. Um, and then we can obviously have a bit more of a back-and-forth conversation to kinda see how we can find that middle ground. Um, just like I said in my conversation the last time I was here, um, our goal is to obviously find a middle ground and to come to an agreement, walking away today, um, or moving forward. That way, we, you know, the district is taken care of with the services that are needed, but also the city's ta, also taken care of with the services that, uh, they're providing and that. It's a realistic expectation from both sides, um, not just from this side of the table, but from that side of the table, and that way, you can work together in unison and not just, uh, a one-side conversation on a pretty typical basis. Um, so to kind of like give a little bit of backstory to how we got here today, um, back when the increase was taken place, uh, where the district absorbed it, it was not managed by anybody here, the G C's sitting on this board. Um, that, now that we have a full resident-made-up board, um, we obviously have a very heavy vested interest in making sure that, um, we're, we're being provided with the services that are expected. Um, with that as well, um, to kinda lead us into this, obviously, we brought this up in conversation. I don't have the exact date, but I would say roughly about a year ago from now of us sitting at this table. Um, it had been brought up in our board meeting, um, around the increase in cost and the issues behind it. Um, the question that I asked was, what was the reasoning behind the, the increase? And the response I got was, there's a lot of calls that are running Magnolia, um, which makes sense. So I asked, okay, let's see it. Um, I have yet, we're a year later, I haven't seen anything that has shown me that most of the, the calls for service are running Magnolia, that aren't self-initiated. Um, and self-initiated calls would be something along the lines of, um, either a building check, um, or something that an officer goes out there and actually starts a run themselves. Um, I can only speak for what I, I do know directly. Um, that would be more of a service, um, again, where we think of like a traffic stop would be something that they would self-initiate as well, um, in those areas. But every other call outside of self-initiated that I'm aware of is that it's gonna be brought in by dispatch. Um, and dispatch is essentially gonna guide those officers to be out in that area at any specific time for that call for service. And after doing a little bit of research on my end, I just couldn't correlate or validate that information. The second piece about it as well is that not only did our district take that increase, but every district around this area also took the same increase. So if the reasoning is that our district has the priority or the majority of the calls for service, then why was that increase passed along to all the other districts in the local area as well? And, and I'll ask the same question. Obviously, I don't manage their district, I'm not responsible for it, but I'd be curious as to know, why did they take that same increase? Was it due to their calls for service? Uh, or is there something completely unrelated to that? Um, so, the cost of the increase is one we would like to understand and to know exactly what we're being provided and why we're being, we're being charged a certain price. And that seems like a very simple request, um, to know exactly what we're paying for. Um, and, and I'll, Brad, I know you weren't there whenever I made this comment, but I know in the previous city council before that, you had made a comment about wondering, uh, exactly, I believe it was in regards to reviewing all the co, the contracts of the city, um, and making sure that all the contracts are still up to date as to what, um, the city is essentially focused on in their, their agenda. And the question that, or the, the statement that you rose was in regards to making sure that you understand why we're going to essentially shell out these funds before we go ahead and, and spend all this time, money and resources into reviewing all these contracts. Um, and that would go in the same as to how we feel today. We would like to know exactly why we're paying what we're paying. We're not disputing that we need to pay our fair share, but what we are disputing is that there's gotta be a fair line between what we pay, as we are seventy percent, um, as y'all have stated, we are seventy percent of the, um, use of these, these resources. Um, and so, we wanna make sure that we're paying our fair share, but also making sure that the resources that are being provided to us are up to the standard that we also expect. Um, so, cost for service is kind of the number-one bucket that we're looking at, is we would like a, a better explanation around the cost for service. Um, I know there's some, some figures that have been thrown around, um, and I think there's also some questions that the rest of our board would have in, in regards to those figures. The second piece is the actual service itself and the service that's being provided. Um, you, you all paid for a study, and, and really, the in-city residents paid for a study, um, for police and fire to have be reviewed. Uh, from my understanding, as of this point, none of it has been actioned on, nor is it going to be actioned on as of right now. Um, but they gave some, some clear specifications around fire, but also police, and that one of the comments that was made was, um, in regards to the model, the, the spending model and how essentially we should be invoicing for that, um, which I was under the impression as of right now, that's not gonna be actioned on. And then the second piece, um, in regards to their model, is that there was potentially, uh, an area of overstaffing. Um, and so, making sure that that, but yet, I'm gonna back up, as well as we still approve for more officers to be hired at the end of that council meeting. Um, and so, for that, like again, we would like to understand exactly where that is. Yes, we can't tell you how to, you know, staff and, and how to hire, but what we can control is that top-line budget. If, if it doesn't make sense to have a twelve, twelve-million-dollar budget, when twelve million dollars isn't needed for that specific timeframe, we would like to understand that as to why we're, we're overspending or, or overestimating for that timeframe. Um, and again, this is a year that we have been asking these questions and have not received those answers. Um, going away from, from the cost perspective, and we can obviously circle back to that some more, is again, the, the actual services being provided. Um, a lot of the conversations that's come up from the residents in the community, but also have been addressed to the community, is that we're not able to enforce the same things, uh, inside of our district as to outside of the district. Um, I know that we don't follow under the same city ordinances, we've talked about that, uh, time and time again, but we haven't found an alternative option or alternative route. The second piece that we've heard from most of the people is they have no respect for the authority of our police officers. Um, and that's because they know that they're not gonna enforce whatever the action is that's being ha, that's taken against them. They're not gonna enforce them running their ATVs up and down the road. They're not gonna enforce them, uh, going out and lighting fireworks. They're not gonna enforce them to, you know, turn their music down. They're not gonna do all those certain things. Um, and they've now understood that, and the message has been brought clear, that now at this point, it's, it's a free-for-all out there, and they're able to do whatever they want. So, this is how we kind of landed here, is that if we're not gonna have any additional services or, or honestly, like the respect isn't gonna change, why would we want to pay more for either the same or lesser service? Um, we might as well go with a, a different service provider and be provided the exact same subpar service that would be currently being provided, um, while paying either less or equal to what we're currently paying, and not at the risk of additional increases time and time again. Um, so, those are the things that have also been brought up in conversation and have been brought to, uh, specifically Lisa and to hopefully the council's attention at this point. Uh, but I'm also not a hundred percent sure that it has made it all the way around, um, which is how we landed here a year later. Um, and then, the, the last piece around it as well is making sure that every single, uh, person from both sides of the table have an open line of communication. There hasn't been one. It doesn't feel like, at least at this point, 'cause it shouldn't have taken us a year to get to this point. Um, uh, in, in full honesty, my objective coming into this meeting, uh, was that we would've had this a year ago. Um, and that would've, there would've been an open line communication. I want there to be a partnership between us, not a, whose side is, is able to kind of win at the end of the day. Uh, it feels like a very large tug-and-pole, and, and that's not the direction that we want to go. Um, I have, that, that last city council meeting where I came and spoke was, honestly, I should've probably done that a year ago, but I was really hoping that we would handle this without bringing us into a whole public forum, uh, for us to discuss every single issue and concern that we absolutely have in our neighborhood, and it's not just by me. Um, this is by all the residents that live inside of our community. Um, I'm taking a lot of the comments that we get from them, I'm taking a lot of the feedback I get from them. We've received multiple emails, messages, phone calls, you name it, we've received it, um, in regards to the lack of services that are being provided and the questions they have. Um, and I want there to be an open dialect between the two of us, which is why I asked in that meeting that, yes, we don't have a say whether, how you, or how you spend the money of the city and, and the budget that is set out, but I definitely think it would benefit to have one of us or somebody involved in that conversation to let you know, this is what we're seeing in our neighborhood and our communities, um, to allow that transparency when setting those budgets and setting those, those, uh, different issues. But also, when we're starting to stray away from the services that are being provided, we're able to give timely feedback and, and making sure that everybody's aware in a very timely and quick manner, and not let this drawn out to be an op, or a year-long issue. Um, and this is much more than a year-long issue. Uh, this is, I'm sure, several years compounded in time over time again, um, that we've landed to where we're at today. Um, but I think if we provide that quick, timely feedback as to the issues that are being hand, that we're, we're seeing and we're hearing, uh, you know, council, y'all can action on that very quickly and resolve them and, and rectify them and make sure that they don't continue versus landing us into a year-long wait, uh, to be able to provide that feedback. I also don't wanna have to come here every month and provide a status update as to where we're seeing issues or concerns. If that's what is best for council, I will happily do it. Um, I will come give a report, just like all of the other people, but if I have to use my three minutes, I'll try to jam everything into three minutes, but I don't think I can give you a clear picture in three minutes of time. Um, that's kind of the initial where we, we've landed so far. Um, if anybody else wants to add on or have any conversation.
On the, like you talking about the fireworks and stuff, I remember a couple of years ago when we found out like where, we got cops out here enforcing, writing tickets for run-and-stop signs and, and then they're saying, hey, if, like, we don't have this type of authority, as I've talked to Rob, we can't enforce our city ordinances out there. And we can't write city ordinances out there. I'm not sure what the, Rob has mentioned, um, I guess maybe the board or, or whatever writes some kind of ordinances that they want, and then we would, um, implement them for the board or, or whatever it is. I'm not sure what the route is, but that's definitely, um, an issue that we need to get resolved as far as, you know, the, the fireworks, the noise, being able to, for the police to be able to enforce what you're talking about.
I think that if our residents were to see it inside the city limits being enforced, where it is enforceable, it would also carry over. Um, and from what I could see, again, just from like a quick little search, I did not see that either, uh, ATVs and golf carts, I know, uh, Gary had brought up in the last city council about maybe expanding on that ordinance, um, and, and that, if, again, it's already there, it's just not verbatim, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's just not verbatim and doesn't say exactly what he was looking for. Uh, but those, some of those ordinances are in place.
They are in place, but legally, if they was to contest this, tell me if I'm wrong, if they come to court and contest it, then it gets thrown out, right?
But what I'm saying is, if I were to take my ATV and run it right down this road that's in the city.
Mm-hmm.
Are they gonna pull me over and give me a ticket for it?
Do you, yes.
I would, yeah, I would love to see it, 'cause I haven't seen.
I don't know that it has to be a, a city ordinance, it's, it's a state, correct? It's just, we follow the state, so.
But how many have been written in the last six months?
I have no idea. I, I know, I've seen quite a few pulled over in front of my house, but I'm not sure on, on written. Um, I'm just saying that I see, I, I, I know what you're talking about on the fireworks and, and those issues.
But it's not just, it's not just the, the ATVs and fireworks that we're concerned about, it's all the other calls for service that we can't do. And, and like, if we don't have the authority, how can we police it? That's the biggest thing. That's the big thing for me is, is like, I honestly was shocked whenever we found out, like, we weren't even able to police it the way that we should. Um, we had people shooting fireworks and.
People shooting fireworks and like potentially burning people's houses down, we don't have any kind of ordinance on that, we don't have any kind of ordinance on, you know, uh, writing tickets or writing any of that kind of stuff.
But, so we're also, um, to that point though, it, that's very fair, right? Like, you're saying that you can't enforce it, so why am I paying the same price as somebody that lives?
Well, we need to get to the point where we can, whatever the legal route is to be able to, initially, we were. I know initially, they were. They were enforcing all that, and then apparently the red tape got involved, and I'm like, hey, you don't have this authority, so, um, what I'm saying is we need to get to that point to where we legally can. I'm not a lawyer and I don't, I don't really know that.
Am I missing something? We can enforce traffic, traffic stop signs, the normal traffic laws, correct? Okay, so we should be doing that. Yeah.
You need validation, the violation of state law.
Okay. So we're not talking about a law that we cannot enforce?
Yes, man, and fireworks and all those things. Basically, all again, we can, police, what I understood was domestic violence and that kind of thing, like as far as like any other crimes, like, I, I misunderstood that we can't, I don't think that's.
If somebody's riding ATV outside of the highway, that's not legal.
Correct.
Uh, as far as the, um, traffic is concerned, the Mud adopted the county's regulations, and then there was an inter-local agreement between the city and the Mud so that we could enforce those traffic regulations. So all of those should be in place. It's just these other things that are limited by state law that we would love to enforce. I really don't want. I really don't want any fireworks out there, the houses are so close together. Um, but I know chief does his best, even though we can't legally enforce or maybe write a ticket. I know if there's loud noise or if um, maybe someone is being reckless on the road, he pulls them over or um, their officers approach and they will at least talk to people and try to get a situation resolved. Even if that doesn't mean, you know, we haven't written a ticket for it. Um, I know they do their best to control the area. Um, I would like to address a couple of things, so. Now? Okay, sorry about that. Um, I do have like the first time that we met was last November and we may have had conversations prior to that, but I know in November we met um, in your offices in Dallas. And we took note, um, we know that you, you didn't like just the math we were using, so we kind of told you we were charging based on a percentage of population. We did mention that there were lots and lots of calls in Magnolia, but that's just part of it. So the numbers of calls led to the increase in the numbers of officers hired so that we could have adequate service out there. Um, that led to the increase in the budget and then the way we figured the budget, uh, we'd been undercharging for quite some time. We didn't, we didn't want to increase it as dramatically as we had to this last year all at once. But we've had to hire so many officers, we did have to raise it because the city was subsidizing. We were, we were paying for services uh, to cover officer salaries, equipment, dispatch, jail, everything that goes along with policing. Um, the city was covering some of that. So to show you the math, um, I brought to council, uh, first I brought it to, I did a little shopping, uh, found a consultant so that we would have an unbiased opinion. Um, I found one that specialized in fire and police studies. Um, I brought that proposal to chief, um, to both chiefs actually. They were in favor of it, I brought it to council in March for approval. Um, they did their research the rest of March and April and May. Uh, they came up with their study um, results over the course of the summer and we presented those recently. So it did take some time. Um, but I, I don't think you were happy with just looking at our budget and our breakdown and our math. So we hired a consultant so we could show you where it came from and to justify the expense. It actually came out um, more expensive uh, than what we were charging significantly, but we also did add a lot of officers the last two years. Okay, um, I guess that's all for now for, for my part.
Okay, um, when I've been outside of city limits and I've seen something like a car passing a parked school bus. And I picked up the phone and called the police and found out that by the schools at CISD, the Josephine police can't handle it and neither can the CISD police. It has to be turned over to the county sheriff. And so the reason I'm mentioning this as one example is would, when I contacted the police about the car passing the school bus that was stopped illegally, um, they gave me who to call. They said to me, we can't help you, call the county sheriff. So if you're given the next step of who to call, if it's outside of any jurisdiction of these officers, is that helpful? Is that possible? Is that feasible?
I think that would only be, I think that would, as far as that would be, would only be like ordinances because other than that, we can enforce everything out there. Besides, you know, fireworks, noise, um, because in our local agreement that Lisa's talking about, we went and had that done just for that reason, for stop signs, because we had somebody contest a stop sign ticket or something and basically got thrown out and that's when we learned we couldn't enforce it, so.
As far as that goes, I think there was a misunderstanding. As somebody who works in transportation, I asked that same question, I work for the director, I talk to the director regularly. The, the transportation, for the school's transportation department. Um, I've asked him and part of it is, is if a cop doesn't see it happen, they can't use the camera that's on the bus to report the car. So if the cop doesn't see it happen, it's almost impossible to do anything about it. So the only thing that we can do, from what I understand, because my nephew has almost been hit right here on six multiple times, not just once, three or four times because a car is passing him. Um, when the bus is stopped. So what happens is, is they will report it to the police department, the police department will then come to that same section and watch it for a week or two. But then while they're there, what happens is is the cars see the cop car and they don't do it. And that's what happens and then they just do it the next time they don't see a cop.
I think that's off subject though.
But at the same time, you know.
So, so is there, am I hearing the, a list of comprehensive services that are provided with help? Is, what, what would start the path to, or the path to a solution?
Yeah, so I think there's two different, eh, there's two different dynamics right now. One is yes, a comprehensive plan that specifically states what we will and will not maintain. I think it would be very helpful for us and for the officers to know exactly what they will and will not be able to enforce. Um, and that way there's a clear understanding um, from both sides. The second part, what I, I, I truly believe is the, the actual service that's being provided. Um, and with that though, is the cost of the service and that the mud specifically feels that we're over budgeting for what is needed due to the self-initiated calls. Um, and due to the calls that, uh, and officers going out there and doing a building check at, you know, let's just say, I'm, I'm exaggerating here, but fifteen times a day on the pool in Magnolia. So they're going to self-initiate a call every time they go out there and do a building check. But to them, a building check is just strolling on by. Um, and if you look at the calls for service that are inputted every single month into the city council agenda, um, I believe they're just with all the, the groups of all the others like fire and everybody else. Um, they're not different, differentiated between what is them self-initiating and what's not. And nobody really looks through that to see what's being held to which side. And so if you actually dig into it and look to see what are calls for service that I pick up the phone and call for those services versus the ones that I'm rolling on by the pool and I'm going to say building check and call it good. Um, that's the, the gap what we're seeing right now is that I don't believe that a twelve million dollar budget is adequate for what we're doing right now. That is needed for that many officers um, during those shifts. Secondly, I also have a different perspective. I, I work with several of these officers hand in hand. I see how they operate, I hear from them. Um, I also uh, witness what they're doing and having four officers show up to a, you know, memaw fell down uh, is, is an overkill to send them from the complete other side of the city to come over there and handle those situations. Uh, we don't need four officers, that's just to me, that's using more resources than what's needed um, in those scenarios. Yeah, we got something very large and a very high scope situation. Absolutely, let's dump the entire city and go over there and support. But on something so little, again, I'm trying to find a way for us to cut back in those resources to make it make sense uh, for here, but also for our district as well. Um, I, I don't see that that, to me it's overkill.
And I said one call for service or four calls for service? That, that's the question, you know? Is four, four officers, three officers, whatever it is showing up to uh, person fail. You know, if it's one call for service and they're all uh, admit, pinned it onto that call, then great. If there's, if it shows up as three or four different calls for service, pin it on how many officers are there, then that makes your numbers look higher as far as the number of um, calls for service, correct?
Just to note too, our budget for police, it's not twelve million, it's three point five for the, for the police budget. Just, just wanted to, didn't want anybody thinking it was a twelve million dollar police budget.
Are you, are you, uh?
You said it was how much again?
The police budget is three point five.
Okay, what's the overall public safety budget for both?
Well, I'm sorry, that, the public safety budget is three point five.
Okay, so just police is?
That it's not twelve million.
Are we, are we supplying the same level of service to the mud and the city? I mean, the level of service we supply is the same, correct? City and mud? We don't differentiate when we go out on a call where it's at.
I believe that most of our follow-up investigations and stuff uh, come from, from, from Magnolia. Uh, there's no data that says that because we to what we talked about uh, with Miguel. But as far as calls for service and uh, follow-up investigations, in my opinion, there's, there's more to in Magnolia than the rest of the city.
Okay, I guess that there's more calls, but our level of service, what we're offering.
Yeah, we do exactly the same thing. It's exa, it's, it's exactly the same for any, any person.
Service is the same, enforcement may not be exactly the same as far as what can be.
Yeah, and, and it, it would be nice if we could, but some of the stuff that they wanted us to do uh, by law we can't and if we were to do something like that, then we, some, some of our officers would be charged with official oppression because they know they can't do that.
But they do respond to every, every complaint and every call.
Yes. And, and, and I've told all the officers and that don't advertise that there's, there's stuff that we can't do out there. Uh, I know because they came to me one time before and said the officer said, hey, we can't, you know, do anything out there. Uh, so all my officers have been instructed, if you get like a loud music call, go out there and say, hey, you know, uh, your neighbor's complaining, can you turn the music down? We don't want to see it go any further. We don't say we can't do anything or we won't do anything.
Just to, just to, so I'm listening to all this and, and I, you know, thank you, Micah, for coming tonight. One of the things that, that um, my understanding when I looked into this was that you could enforce anything criminal, but you couldn't enforce anything civil.
Well, that's really civil is no law enforcement. Law, no law enforcement does uh, enforces civil. Uh, now they're, they can serve civil papers and stuff like that, uh, the constables and some of the deputies. But uh, law enforcement agencies provide for criminal services, not civil services.
So is a noise complaint considered civil or criminal?
Uh, if it was under a city ordinance, it would be, it would be criminal.
But because Magnolia doesn't have that agreement with us, it's not enforceable.
No. And then, it's just, it's just like, it's just.
This is where I'm confused, I'm just trying to get.
It's just like in the county, right, right now, if a deputy sheriff gets a loud music call, there's nothing they can do and it's no different than, than Magnolia, they're in the county. So uh, the county does not have a, uh, at one time the county did have a city ordinance uh, for, for uh, like barking dogs, it got challenged in the courts and uh, and they lost.
I, and Rob and I have had lots of conversations about this and I've talked to T-Mall attorneys every chance that I've had. And even if the mud had an agreement, please enforce these things, we'd like it and we signed off on it. There's no authority for a city um, to enforce outside city limits. There, there's just, there's no state law that allows it.
The big problem, the big problem with this uh, confusion, not only here but in, in the, in the muds, uh, in the developments outside of the city is that the city has limited jurisdiction to do things. We have almost no extraterritorial jurisdiction uh, in a criminal situation. We do have plat, plat approval and uh, maybe nuisance. And we would have civil juris, uh, civil standing to stop that. But a general law city cannot, does not have any authority to pass an ordinance outside its own territory. What, what we can do, what the police can do is enforce any state law violation that they see. I don't know if they do that or not, but on traffic law, that would mean stop signs, uh, speed limits thirty miles an hour by state law on, in the urban district or fifty-five in a rural district. And blocking a driveway, parking in an intersection, running a red light if you had a red light, I guess. Josh and I have tried for several years to figure out how to give the police more authority in the, in the mud because that's what you want, that's what you need. What you're getting is twenty-four seven patrol. And that's most of what the police do anyway is to drive around and show the police car off and answer calls for service when they come in. But you don't know how many crimes have been not committed because one of these guys drove by, one, one of these gentlemen drove by and and the police car and, and the burglar said, I think I'll go somewhere else. But it's a matter of jurisdiction, the city does not have any ability to make it a crime outside of the city limits. State law does because of course it's in the whole state. So we can pick out a whole bunch of those that they can enforce over there. We went round and round trying to get a school zone, uh, the school out there. Uh, I guess we got it done, didn't we? But that took an action by the county first and then by the mud board and then by the city. I think that's kind of the road it took, wasn't it?
It was.
It put up signs and.
The, it was the ISD, county and the ISD had to take action.
Yes. That, that gives, because they have authority to create that violation out there, then we can enforce any violation that you have jurisdiction to create in the mud by this contract. I think the thing is that mud doesn't have a whole lot of jurisdiction to create. You could do, what is it, property, you can pass uh, orders to protect the property of the mud and but to, to pass a firewall ordinance, I don't think, I don't think you've got much jurisdiction to do that. But anything that, that, that the board can create in terms of the violation that we also can enforce, we'd be glad to do it, just tell us what it is. We've struggled with trying to figure out how to give you more, give these guys more authority. We don't like the idea of telling a citizen out there, we can't, I'm sorry, we can't enforce that because we don't have jurisdiction to do that. We're trying to not talk about that very much and here we are talking about it all night.
I think we need some legislation passed um, that would allow a city by mutual agreement to do that with the mud um, as well as, you know, court, court jurisdiction as well.
Well, it's not easy, it's not just that easy to agree with them to do it. We both have to have jurisdiction, both have to have authority under state law.
That's what I said, yeah.
To do it and the county's the same way. Counties like a general law city, they have to find the statute that authorizes what they do, just like you do.
And I know Lisa has talked to the legislators and I've spoken to the legislators about this. Uh, it's really in their hands of what they.
You probably see it all the time.
Yeah, and to be, and to be clear, I think both sides of the table understands the scope of what the city can and can't do. I think the frustration on the mud board side of the table from what I'm hearing tonight and from our conversations that we've had is, is not so much trying to expand the city's authority, but also trying to get comfortable and happy and feel that the level of service that the city can legally provide to the district is adequate and meets the expectations of the district. And I think that's more of the scope of what is being talked about right now and the, the standards of service and the quality of service and the reporting of that service. And Micah has individually and personally gone through several call records and, and pointed out inadequacies and, and and those types, inefficiencies and those types of things. And so then they question and the residents in the board, or within the district question, why are we paying for so much, paying so much for this service when this is what we're receiving as the quality of the service? Uh, correct me if I've misread anything.
We're paying for one hundred percent of the service, but we can technically and legally only receive eighty-five percent or eighty percent or whatever of the services that the city, you know, provides to the rest of the, 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 inside the city residents.
Well, that's, that's another misconception is that you don't have the same rights in the mud that you would if you lived in the city. You don't have the same rights that cities, citizens have. And citizens in the city don't have the same rights that you do out there, so I, I don't think we can do anything about that.
Even if we took the rights away, right, and we kind of go back originally to the quality of service. Like I personally also have made calls into the police department and had it really, there was one call where I was told to not call. there was one call where I was told to not call again and not to call. And there was a gentleman.
Where did you call? What number?
I called the, uh, Joe, City of Josephine non-emergency number.
So the non-emergency number, okay.
And I asked for a police to come out and do a courtesy drive-by because there was a gentleman that was sitting, um, where the kids were getting dropped off from the school bus. He would come every day before the kids got off the bus, and he was there from the duration of all kids getting off. He didn't live on our street. Like I know, I live, live at the end of the street, so he didn't live there. Not to mention my neighbor that he parked in front of called me personally because they were out of town, and they wanted to know why this car was there every day. So I decided to call and ask for a courtesy drive-by because out of prevention of, if this guy doesn't live here and he's here and these kids are passing, I would hate to not bring this to light and something happen, right? And the officer that I ended up speaking to that called me back pretty much told me that it wasn't the first time, the first phone call they had gotten on this vehicle, that they knew who they were, they were a vet, they worked for the school district, and he came over there to fish. I work from home, that gentleman never once had a fishing pole or ever got out of his vehicle. And he would sit there for hours, and he would watch the kids drive, like walk by. And I get he wasn't necessarily disturbing anything, so I wasn't asking for anybody to do anything about it per se, but did a police officer come by? No, because they said they had already dressed it and already talked to him. Now, my neighbor and someone else called again, and they ended up coming by. And then what happened? The gentleman came the next day again, this time with a fishing pole. But I was already told he didn't live in Magnolia. And so my issue with that was, okay, he told you he doesn't live here, but yet he's allowed to fish here, we stock those ponds, it's considered private property, we pay for those resources, so he still shouldn't be on the premises if he's going to be fishing there. That's still an issue to me. And even if we circle back to fireworks, again, I called one time on fireworks because they were blocking the roads. I could not get through the roads, they would live like, and these are adults, these aren't kids just messing around. They're adults blocking the roads because they're popping fireworks. And yes, you're right, we do have different ordinances and different laws. However, some of those laws also have to do within how many feet and how high they can go up in a county law. And they break all of those laws. And not only that, but they were firing firecrackers at my moving vehicle. They told me to pass and then proceeded to jokingly fire at me. And the response time, I was probably on hold for at least thirty minutes before I got to talk to anybody. And not to mention that I've personally put out fires myself in the pasture that's next to us. There's a reason why we can't put anything on that land, there are signs. And for you to have a fire in certain places that are an issue and a safety concern, yeah, I do kind of expect for you at least to show your presence and do a drive-by in at least something, because I do think those are all things. Like I've had to put out fires in my own yard because someone decided to come pop fireworks in front of my house, even though I have no neighbors.
So I guess my thought would be as far as, what are you, what are y'all looking to get out of this, like immediately? Like are we looking to try to rewrite a new agreement? Um, what, what, um, so, just so our expectations are all on the same level here of what we're trying, are we trying to? I think there needs to be a new agreement written, um, but I just want to know what y'all's thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I think it's two different parts. One, uh, uh, an agreement needs to be made because obviously like the, the level of expectation in the current agreement between the, the landowner and, and the development and all that good stuff, uh, uh, obviously before our time, um, is very vague and not informative as to exactly what is to be upheld. The, if you read in that agreement, it says in there that it is to be enforced as if, and, and I'm again paraphrasing, I don't have the agreement in front of me, but it says something along the lines of, there's a, um, it is to be enforced as if you're in the city. And you can't do that. You, you're physically, everybody, I think everybody at the table has agreed that we can't do that. Uh, and, and at that point, like basically that's a, that's a contract that can't even be followed. Um, and I think there needs to be something that's more, uh, agreeable, but also that's transparent from both sides as to what's going to be offered. Um, the second part is, in, in, I mentioned this the other day, is, so if I'm going to pay seventy-seven dollars, I don't know the breakdown is off the top of my head, but fifty-some-odd dollars for police, why would I not go to a, a county service? I'm going to get the exact same service.
Definitely not going to get the call time, the response time, but I mean, that's a board decision. My thing, my big thing is like when the agreement, as far as the agreement, I think it needs to be really clear. That way the, you know, the board and the city, everybody understands what's in that, that agreement.
I think the biggest issue though is the, the lack of, of trust. And if, even if there is an agreement, is it going to be followed? Because I would, I would challenge today, and I would love to somebody to, to tell me that I'm wrong, but from what I dug into, like it goes back to the ordinances that are inside the city, is show me that we're enforcing those ordinances inside the city and, and prove to me that we're forcing ATV, that we're enforcing fireworks, that we're enforcing those ordinance that we're having. Show me that I'm, I'm wrong. Um, I, I've been asking for that for, since November, and I have not seen anything, and would love to see that I am wrong. Um, but that's one thing to put it in place and say, hey, listen, we're going to enforce this moving forward. It's a whole different step to actually do it. Um, and I think that's where, at least for us, is it's, it's kind of not just talk about it. We've got to actually action on it now at this point. Um, and I'll tell you, I mean, I, I, I see everybody rip down the road all the time on their side-by-sides, ATVs, um, four-wheelers, golf carts, you name it. And, and, and I know Gary brought this up, that we need to enhance on this. I would assume that issue is, I know he, he had mentioned at last city council that his vehicle had been hit by one of those, uh, vehicles. And it's not the first time, and it definitely won't be the last, but if we're going to actually have an ordinance in place, it's got to be addressed and actually actioned and, and followed upon. Because yes, if you pull me over a hundred times and never write me a citation, I'm going to keep on doing it because I'm not going to learn my lesson. But it's becoming one of those things that is becoming an, an issue. Um, there's, and there's numerous situations that I could talk about where either injuries or damage has been accomplished by those specific vehicles. Um, and the only feedback that I ever get, which is well after the fact, is that.
Well, I'll tell you on that issue, me and the chief have had a conversation, and then there's fixing to be a bulletin go out and basically warning the public that, hey, if you're caught, there's fixing to be heavy enforcement, like everything that they can do to enforce, you know, obviously we can't patrol every street twenty-four seven, but there's fixing to be, um, heavy enforcement as far as.
We're not against, you know, them using golf carts on the roadway if they're following, you know.
Correct, correct, if you're following.
You got the license, you got the mirrors, you got the turn signals, brake lights, all headlights, all that, then you can do it because Magnolia Point is a master-planned community, right? It's a development that was set up by home builders, so that's, that can be taken care of. I get we can't do the fireworks stuff, uh, people are upset because they, people stand in the middle of fireworks, or stand in the middle of the street, will shoot off the fireworks, um, intentionally not let people pass. Cops come out there, you can't even ride them ticket for the fireworks, right? Obstructing the roadway. Technically, that's what they're doing according to the transportation code. You're telling me that we can, that we can enforce, uh, penal code, transportation code, health, safety code and all that? Then, then we need to, you know, look at additional loopholes, you know, it may not be specifically, uh, shooting off fireworks in the street. But you write somebody a ticket for obstructing the roadway for not allowing cars to pass, for sitting out there being pedestrian in the roadway, then they're going to eventually say, you know, I need to stop doing this, get this through.
I'm pretty sure it's against the state law to shoot fireworks from the roadway. I may be wrong, but I don't know if that's a state code or county code or, or what, but you can't shoot them from the roadway, so.
But there's, there's, there's other, there's other avenues that, you know, could possibly be looked at to get, to kind of get the same compliance.
Mm-hmm.
Even though they can't follow a city ordinance over fireworks, is what I'm getting at.
And even the ATVs, right, majority of these ATVs that are there, because again, I live next to the field, so they pretty much drive up and down and tear up that field, right? And I have, I have called on ATVs twice ever living in Magnolia. And both times it was because of the safety of the children, like they come there, they take turns, they're popping wheelies, doing tricks. Right there, um, and, and it wasn't so much because they were on the land, like is it annoying to be working from home and sound like you're next to a dirt trail? Absolutely. But when they start doing things in the street and they almost get hit and things like that, and then I call, and then, uh, like this last time I called, I mean, I watched a kid almost get nailed, like, and that would have cost his life. And because he was driving in the street, not because he was driving in these dirt areas. And when I called again, the dispatch told me, oh, well, they're there. And I'm like, I've been standing outside this entire time because I'm concerned for these kids' safety, there is nobody here. And then I get a report pretty much saying, well, there's nothing we can do, even though the cop watched them go off-road into the neighborhood. And, you know, another instance, the cop just when they got involved with it, instead of, I mean, whether they could or couldn't do anything with it, it became a joke to a lot of people in the neighborhood because then the police decided to take a selfie with the kids that were being disruptive to the roads and took a selfie with them, and then they posted it on Facebook like it was a joke, like, oh, you, police aren't going to do anything. And then it was like a laughing matter, which I don't think that's respectful. I don't, I don't want a, to have a relationship with police officers where they're mocked like that either. You know, because we're picking and choosing what we do or don't want to do. I think there are certain things that are safety, and it doesn't matter if we're in the mud district or not. This is not an off-road vehicle, it wasn't licensed, there's nothing on it, there's no lights, there's nothing to it. But yet we're going to take a picture with them and post it on Facebook and promote it.
So I guess what I'm hearing is obviously a new mud agreement is what we're looking for. Um, enforcement of, um, and what else? Uh, am I missing?
Include the, the current fees, but also a, a time of when we'll reevaluate those fees during budget every year. I think we need to, um, look at those accounts because the mud is only going to grow as far as number of homes. So I think we need to count them, uh, at a particular time, whether that's, you know, May first or, or June first, so that we can prepare for that next budget year and see if there's going to be an increase.
So I think some of the concern that I have been hearing in the background is concern over, um, the, the city's budget overall, for instance, the study that was done that said that possibly the, the police was, they were overstaffed, and then the city made a decision to hire more police officers. And so it's, it feels to these board members and these residents that the, the prices are getting raised, but the city doesn't appear to be concerned about the budget because of the fact that they're hiring more people, even though the study says that they're possibly already overstaffed, so that's concerning. So I think that to correct that in the future, maybe, and, and of course, we understand that the city's police services and, and budgetary matters are matters for the city to decide. But if the, the residents who are paying the, the fee, the majority of the fees for these services could have, um, give some input to the city prior to decisions being made, I think that, that would be helpful. And we can consider the services that the city is providing, maybe, it, you know, if, if, if you think that the, the city needs to hire more officers for better service, but the residents maybe may think that, you know, they like the services they're getting now and they don't need more officers. Especially if there are these duplicative calls that are being, being made, for instance, one call having four officers, maybe that's not needed. I think that when we have these budget talks, if the, if maybe a few of the directors could have just a seat at the table to be heard, that would be helpful.
I think being heard is, uh, what we want everybody to be heard as far as I'm concerned, especially the citizens, you know, the meetings and the budgets are, it's what they're there for.
When you say, uh, I mean, citizens are paying the majority of the fees, is it because of the numbers? It's not because we're paying more than them?
Correct.
Nobody's paying more. So nobody's paying more than anybody after the adjustment. Right now, the citizens are paying quite a bit more per roof. Yes, the citizens adjusting are paying quite a bit more per roof than, uh, the muds. Can we agree on that? So there needs to be some adjustment to where people pay for what they get.
I don't necessarily completely understand the breakdown as to like, not necessarily this audit, but previous year's audit to show where that shortfall that we are, we're falling short. Um, I mean, we have this diagram that tells you like what your tax dollar is, but technically speaking, you guys aren't charging the same amount per house because you do it by your square footage. And so I'm curious to see, you know, how you just took the budget and then you divided it and said, okay, this is how many per person. I don't understand how that's equal to what you guys are paying. I would see if maybe, once you had, you figured your numbers and what you guys budgeted for your in-city taxpayers and then took the remainder of that, then I can see where we could divide that by rooftop for us. But it doesn't quite seem to add up, and I also never really hear any mention of the contribution that we've also been provided to help support, build the public safety.
Support the public safety for the, the, um, the new station?
Yes.
Okay. So on that one, uh, there was an original agreement, um, that, that did, um, a thousand dollars per lot. It was kind of like an impact fee, but we didn't call it an impact fee, it was just a per-lot fee that someday was going to help fund a station. But we grew so much, so fast, that we've outgrown the police department in this building and the fire department, uh, needed some relief too. So we needed the building now versus waiting ten years or fifteen years for the build-out. So we worked, um, an arrangement with the developers for an advanced funding agreement. So the city took out tax notes over a seven-year period. Uh, we had the mud pay a year in advance, so we're ahead of the payment, but they essentially pay the debt on their portion of the building. So if it's seventy percent population mud, thirty percent city, um, they essentially paid the seventy percent part, and the city only took out debt for, um, their thirty percent. Is that? So the building itself was approx, just over nine million, um, for just, for just the, that building. Um, now, we did do a, a project for the community center in the annex, but we, that funding arrangement only applied to the public safety building.
So we paid, just to understand, so we paid approximately seven million from our mud in that agreement?
Maybe a little bit less than that.
Okay.
That included landowners, correct?
No, actually, I don't think it did, no. No, we bought the land in advance. Just the building.
I mean, I think, I think the biggest part where, like, y'all may have seen that, A, we're trying to increase the, the rates, is because when this mud rate was originally discussed, the muds were even talked about, we had two police officers, two. And we've gone from two to fifteen in ten years. Um, now granted, like the mud, we didn't, I don't think we had that many, even when the mud, like the first house was built in the mud, I think we had three or four by then. But at the same time, like when this was initially discussed, we had a lot smaller department. We, I think we were barely, we weren't even in this city building yet, um, when it was first discussed, so like the, and we haven't given any kind of increases since, until we did the, the first eight percent that I believe you were talking about. That was the first increase that we had since the beginning negotiation.
Yeah, and so just to understand, I guess, in that first initial increase, because I wasn't obviously super involved with city council whenever they had made that, and I hadn't gone back and watched the, the footage on it. Was it discussed as to why there was an increase?
Uh, it's, 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 it was personnel. Uh, at first, we only charged for personnel. This last go-round, when we did the study, we looked at things like dispatch, uh, jail services, um, radios, anything else that went into the police service. We have not charged anything additional for things like cars, um, you know, replacement vehicles. We haven't charged anything for that, uh, nor have we on the fire side either, as far as, you know, new fire trucks to be purchased in the future. Um, but we did charge, we believe, the fair share for the, for the building itself, and we were happy with that. Um, but right now, this only squares us up as far as personnel.
And then to under, that brings up a great point, so let's say that. And then to under, that brings up a great point. So let's say that an officer goes out here and absolutely wrecks his, his vehicle right now. Is that gonna take into account for next year that we'll have to replace vehicles and things of that nature? Obviously, we've got insurance and things like that, but.
We, we do have insurance. Um, sooner or later, we'll, we'll have replacement vehicles and we'll need to factor that in. We have not done it yet.
So the, I mean, some of the stuff you said we've, we've done, uh, you know, I guess, getting ready for the future and stuff, uh, hiring, hiring, I guess, more officers than what tech, technically we may need right now. Uh, you know, having a sergeant per shift with two officers per shift right now, uh, having investigator, uh, I get, having an investigator, right? But when you have one investigator, you typically don't need an investigator to be a sergeant to therefore increase their pay, which increases the rates across the board, right? Uh, you know, some of that stuff like that could have, you know, possibly been held out to keep, uh, keep rates a little bit lower. I mean, every little dollar you can save, uh, until a future time when it's needed is great. I mean, if you get, if you get two investigators, three investigators and you wanna have one as a sergeant, okay, good. But when you only have one, why do you need one to say, hey, I'm sergeant. Now, I got a pay increase. By whatever percentage that pay increase, uh, goes up for the position, uh, which is kind of un, unnecessary funds and in turn leads back to the increased rates. Correct?
And just let me address that. Uh, we do have a sergeant in CID because he is, uh, he has a more of a workload that he's able to handle. So our patrol officers still have to work cases and do some of their own filing. He had to have some authority to be able to tell these officers, uh, they need to change this or change that. So that is the reason we went to, uh, having a sergeant in CID.
So was there, in, in that specific case, uh, or y, use all of your sergeants in general, is there a process that they go through to move to that next rank from an officer to a sergeant?
Well, uh, we open it up. Of course, I ultimately make the decision on who's promoted and who's not promoted. Uh, that's, I have that authority.
But is there a process? So if I were to apply, if, let's say I'm one of your officers?
Some, some I, some I appoint. Uh, like I said, I have that authority to do that and I will continue to do that. Uh, and some, there is a process where they go through a review board and are promoted that way.
How do you determine that?
Which, on what?
Eh, if you're gonna appoint them versus if you're gonna put them through a review board?
So far, like, the lieutenants, uh, they, they've only been appointed. They, they don't go through a process because I, I feel like they're an administrative position. Uh, so I, we, I don't open that up for lieutenants or above. On the sergeant's position, uh, all of them have gone through the process of being promoted with a board and stuff, except the one in CID. And the reason that he was just appointed to that position and not went through a, a process is because he, from everyone that was there, he was the only one qualified to be able to perform that, that job the way it was to be done adequately.
And you said every one of them have gone through a board? Do you maintain all the documents on that?
Yes. And we, I think we supplied those in your open record request. I think we supplied all that information to you.
Yeah, there wasn't review board information for any of them except, uh?
Uh, I contradict that, uh, cuz I looked at some of the stuff that went, it was in there.
All right, so we can not sit here on that. We, uh, obviously, we agree. We need to come up with some kind of new agreement. Um, um.
Would one side like to, right, a proposed agreement and we can take that back and forth a little bit and then bring it to the mud board and council? Would somebody like to, since you have concerns, do you wanna, does your side wanna write it? And then Rob can talk to your attorneys and see if we can't come to something that we think is, is, you know, workable for both groups?
Yeah.
I think we just, we've gotta find a starting point. So I think if we, if you were to write it and put your concerns in there and then, you know, we can tell you this isn't feasible or yes, we can work with that, you know, I think we just need a starting place. I agree that the agreement that we have is, um, it's very vague and I, I definitely think we need to firm it up.
Yeah, I think, I think that also, eh, that would lead into like the sticker shock portion. I know that's a big portion for us is making sure that there is like a maybe regular cadence if we're gonna do a review, if that's annually or or something along those lines, uh, versus just as we see fit, um, to make sure that's transparent across all boards.
I agree with that.
I, I was, I mean, I've got two family members that live out there, so, you know, I, I, my eyes, I look at it as, even though y'all aren't, y'all are citizens to me, you know, that's how I view it is, you know, I got two family members that live over there, so, um, I want, I want y'all to be treated like any other resident in the city of Josephine, so.
Yeah, I do know one thing that kind of, you know, upset the, the residents too was, uh, for example, the last increase. Or after we'd given, we had agreed to the five-dollar increase, right? Uh, after that, I believe Lisa came to us and requested, was it eight dollars additional to be subsidized by the mud? Uh, theoretically hiding that eight dollars inside the people's mud taxes. And when, when the, when the, when the board said, no, we don't wanna do that, then the city has, you know, the authority to just come around and go, okay, you didn't wanna pay it, we'll just throw it on people's water bills, right? That's, that's kind of, you know, slapping the homeowner in the face going, hey, well, you don't, you know, your, your mud district didn't wanna pay this behind, behind your back, so because we can, we're gonna throw it on your water bill. People feel like their water bills have grad, have been going up, up and up. Um, I've been here five, going on five and a half years. Um, and we're getting, you know, to the point to where I understand the increase of the water cuz you pay an increase in water value from North Texas Admissible Water District, from your water supplier and all that. So I get the, the increases they pass on to y'all for the water. Uh, but when it's getting to, um, to try to be seventy-seven dollars and forty cents a month in, uh, public safety fees, at what point is it gonna surpass how much I pay in water? Even if I pay, I mean, obviously, I don't pay the minimum in water because I have a, a house full of people and water my yard. But for those people that pay the minimum on water, on their water bill, the ones that pay the minimum on the trash service, uh, sewer, uh, at some point, they're gonna pay more in these fees because the city can just add it to your water bill because they can. Does that make sense?
When, when you say add it to the water bill, are you talking about the rate for the water going up or is there a, a line?
They understand the water rate going up when, when the.
So I, I don't have another means to collect it. I don't know that people would actually pay it if it wasn't on the water bill. On a utility bill, if the water bill's not paid, the water eventually gets cut off. I don't have a way to enforce people paying public safety fees any other way. If somebody can find a way for me to do that, let me know, but I don't know of any other way that we could actually make people pay it.
But I think part of this contract amendment would be setting more specific parameters of how frequent and by what percentage those increases can occur. And so I think that's, that's one of the.
Right, whether it be every couple of years.
I would say kinda like a, like a tax rate. You can't go over a certain percentage or whatever, you know? Some way of coming to an agreement of, you know.
That would tire our hands to, like, the last few years, I've, employment expenses has gone crazy. And it tires our hands with small, to cities there will not be.
And Lisa, aren't we bound by state laws? Um, we can't subsidize?
Well, there's a provision, I think it's in the Texas constitution about, uh, not subsidizing. A city is not supposed to give away services or, or, you know, things of value. Um, so we're trying to square that up and make that right for our, our Josephine citizens. Um, I don't know if, I'd have to look at it and just make a proposal, I suppose, and put it on paper and we'll look at it. If you limit it by a certain percentage, um, that is gonna limit, you know, how many people chief can hire or if we're trying to keep our salaries competitive with neighboring communities. And that is another reason for the increase, I think is a fair point, is, um, our salaries, at least when I arrived here, were pretty low. And we've now made them comparable with other cities. So we're now, um, hopefully, people will wanna stay here. They'll, they'll wanna work in Josephine and they'll wanna stay. Um, but we did manage to get those salaries up and that is, in addition to hiring additional officers, that is part of the reason for the increase as well.
I also think it'd be important to, when these increases do, it also would be best if it made sense when you apply the increases. So you have, you have your budget and for your, your next fiscal year, but having an increase six months into that year doesn't make sense either. And those, that's kind of what we went through this last time was, okay, we had an increase of services because of inflation or whatever the calls, whatever the reason being, but then we had another increase in the middle of that year. And that, to me, was, wasn't right because if we were following the budget, then everything should have been done at that proper time, not in the middle of the year. And so.
Well, I think we had raised the rates. I think it was about eight dollars and then, um, we realized that we were not covering expenses. So that's when we asked the mud to pay the additional five per month so we didn't have to burden the residents. Um, but I agree with you going forward. I do think there needs to be just an annual review and we look at it at that time. And we, you know, whether it's May one or June one, um, Melissa will have to tell me what date she needs that information by, uh, so we can prepare the budget. And I think we find one of those dates and that's when we look at a number of, of new homes that have gone in and we evaluate, you know, what the right, um, what the right numbers are for the following year as far as new rooftops.
Yeah, I mean, one of the big things too is this COLA, which you're talking about, the cost of living adjustment. I mean, that, that happens to every business in every city everywhere, right? Um, that typically happens out of cycle. That didn't typically happen, um, at the new fiscal year. Our fiscal year is October for the city, right? Um, we always do the budget true-up about six months in, right? Isn't that right, Melissa? So, I mean, those would be the two opportunities that I could see where we could do a rate adjustment if it was necessary. I don't know if that makes logical sense or not. Um, one of the things that, you know, we, we picked a lot on the, the police department tonight, but the city is picking up a fire department. We're getting ready to open that building here soon with the fire department. Um, there are going to be additional costs with that. Uh, additional vehicles, additional manpower, all of that. So, I mean, that, that's gonna be a pretty big strain. That seventy-seven dollars, I think, is going to go up and it's gonna go up for me as a citizen as well. So being cost-conscious on that is something we have to all work together on.
I think we're committed for this year. We've done the study, uh, we've evaluated. We feel at least as far as personnel goes that we're, you know, things are even at the moment, um, city resident versus out-of-city resident. So I think we could commit for the, for the next budget year to stick with what we have, but I do think there at least needs to be a minimum of an annual review. And I think cost of living, uh, rather than putting in a, um, you know, just one percentage and sticking to it, I do think we need to consider cost of living will vary from year to year. Um, and then, you know, I don't know what to say about number of officers increasing and, and keeping up with salaries as far as, you know, being competitive. Um, it's hard to just say we're not gonna go above eight percent every year or we're not gonna go above, you know, whatever that is. So maybe some other kind of a formula.
Um, quick question. A lot of cities have interlocal agreements with the county to provide, um, services, uh, nine-one-one emergency services. Does the city of Josephine have the same contract with the county whereby if someone calls nine-one-one, y'all will provide service?
Yes.
And did y'all take that into account when you were doing your study and figuring out the number of calls and?
Chief, I'll let you kinda answer that. As far as the fire department goes, um, I think we get about fifty thousand a year from the county to cover those out-of-city calls. So that was also factored in. Um, I think any revenue that we received, Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I know all of the revenue that we received on any part of this, um, was factored in.
That, uh, well, we have a contract with the Collin County Sheriff's Office for the radio services and they, and they, they do the fees by the number of radios that you have, uh, connected. So whether it be portable radios or in-car radios, evidently they had not done a, evidently they had not audit that in a, in a long time. And, uh, we were getting that for sixty thousand dollars a year from the county. But evidently, they, they recently, uh, did an audit and our price has gone up to, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars now. And that's just for the PD. That, uh, from my understanding, when I reached out to the fire chief the other day and asked him about the fees of, for the fire department for the radio service, he says if they answer calls outside the city, that the county will not charge them anything, but if it were to just answer calls within the city, that they would start charging also for all the radio connections that they have.
And I, and I think we were talking about two different things a minute ago, so I was referring to we have mutual aid agreements to respond. So we're, we're not receiving a separate check for the police department.
Okay.
Okay, so.
While we're rewriting, while we're looking at rewriting this agreement, is there a way to delay the increase? It's supposed to take hap, it's supposed to take place, what, in October, is it? In October? So we, so we're not slamming seventy-seven dollars and forty cents on the, on the mud district residents, um, when they're currently paying thirty-something?
So we talked about this, um, extensively and we, we approved it last month to go into effect October one just for the fact that we feel like we just cannot subsidize. Um, and if Rob wants to maybe address that, but we, we put it into effect October one, so it'll start with the October billing, which is a little bit, I guess, towards the last half of the month. So that's, that's when residents will see it. I, I don't know any other way. I don't know how to tell my Josephine residents that they have to pay for services in the mud.
In effect, you, the Texas constitution does not allow the city to use public funds to, for, to, uh, private individuals. Uh, and so it's my understanding that the city was actually paying, was it thirty or forty thousand dollars a month more than it was? The, the cost was more than what the income was?
But really, they could, technically, they could say that the thirty-five dol, thirty whatever dollars we're paying currently, um, can suffice due to not receiving one percent of the same services that the city Josephine residents receive, right?
No.
So it's, it's not about that. I mean, I, I have to hire an officer? Or I don't have an, uh, hire an officer. I can't have an officer and say, you know, we're only gonna charge you eighty-five percent because you're only getting eighty-five percent. That's all I can afford. I either hire him or I don't. It's not a pick and choose. So I, I don't, I don't think we could operate that way.
In fact, you're getting more, you're not getting as many. Everybody's picking out a little cases and I agree. I understand we could do something about those maybe, but you're getting more patrol and you're a patrol officer, I think. We're getting, you're getting more of that than people in the city are, or at least as much, because there's, what, three times as many people in the mud as are in the city. And you've got three officers, uh, twenty-four or seven, you've got three on duty and probably two of them are out, out in, uh, your neighborhood somewhere. So the fact that they can't arrest for this, that, or the other, or they, they weren't there when it happened, uh, doesn't change the expense. The expense is still there. You know, you have an eight-hour shift and you drive around and don't arrest anybody. It doesn't mean you didn't do your job. It means you didn't arrest somebody or something. But the fact that you're there is the level of service that we have to provide. And the fact that they, in these individual cases, just says, sorry, I don't, I can't do anything about that wild neighbor, uh, because your, our noise ordinance doesn't apply in the, and I've explained that. Anything that you as a board can make illegal out there by, uh, under state law and we can enforce, we'll do it. We just have to figure out how that works. As I say, we struggled with the school zone for several months before we found out that worked out.
If I may, I, I can give an example of, you know, we represent, Mindy and I represent several special purpose districts like this one in North Texas. Uh, we have a project that's in the, the Crandall area outside of the city limits. And we have a contract with Crandall for their police department to hire, they've hired, I forget exactly how many it is. Let's say it's either three or four officers at a dedicated salary. It's stated in the contract. The district pays for the salary of those three officers, four officers, however many it is, uh, to patrol for X amount of hours, whatever the max, there's certain state law and maximum shifts and those types of things. And so it's, it's very specific of, these officers are dedicated, they're hired by the city, they're paid, you know, salaries by the city. But the district, because the district is requesting the service, uh, they're needed and they're patrolling solely in the district property. There's, there's no question of we're being pulled from the city to go out to the mud. How many calls are there? How many calls are there? Those types of things. Um, to me, that's possibly a more fair way of handling it where these board members can feel more secure and we know which officers are on duty and patrolling our area. They shift their patrol hours so that people can't, you know, expect when, when people are going to be on versus off. Um, so that might be a solution to this problem because it does feel that, you know, we're talking about standards of service. You guys are talking about what you can or can't enforce. Um, and it just might, might be a similar solution of versus we pay this and the city, and city residents pay that.
And they get to, to pick the level of service, right? Because if you only have X number of officers, maybe they're not there twenty-four, seven. But they get to control their budget because they enter into a contract with the city and say, this is the service that we're looking for. We want X number of officers. We want them for this many of hour, this many number of hours. Um, and then of course they pay for the vehicle, et cetera, um, all the costs associated with, with the level of service that they are looking for. Not the level of service that the city is taking. Again, it, it was off-putting to see that the, the result of the survey that y'all are using says that you have too many officers that you're hiring more officers. And that's something that, that these residents are paying for and they don't have any control over that.
I think we were only off by one.
You've got the same problem with that city in the MUD as, as we have here. How's it different? It's not.
Right, but the cost is more controlled because we, we know exactly what we're paying for, how many officers and how many hours we're paying for them to patrol. You're correct in that what they can and can't enforce is the same issue, but we're not really arguing that here.
Well, and I know it's been brought up several times that there's, there's been officers added, that there, there hasn't been officers added. There was a, there was an administrative position added, uh, but we have not added any more officers since that survey has been done.
We've got unfilled positions that we finally filled.
Now, we do.
There was one lieutenant.
Now, that survey did say that, yeah. That survey said that probably in twenty-twenty-six, we're going to have to add two more. Uh, but, but when that survey was done, it's also said for, for cities that have a call load under fifteen thousand, that this survey is not probably the best thing to, it should probably go by what the national average says, which is one point nine officers, uh, per thousand, which would actually put us about, uh, twenty, twenty employees, which, you know, we're five less than that right now. But we have not added in, since that survey, we have not added any officers at all whatsoever.
So in your scenario where the MUD hires their, or gets the dedicated police officers, when they're not working, the city takes over?
The county?
That, that just.
County. So that would eliminate MUD from, yeah. Uh, when those officers weren't on board, if a call came in, the city would be covering it, correct? Is that?
It'd be the county or mutual aid.
The county, yeah, with mutual aid.
Mutual aid.
So the city's going to respond anyway with a mutual, mutual aid.
Like it's the MUD couldn't have its own police department. That's what it sounds like.
Is, is there a way?
We've been talking about this for six years. Is there a way to separate, um, calls?
And police initiated calls?
None, not on the bottom.
Uh, say somebody calls in noise nuisance, domestic violence from a MUD. Separate that from the city?
Nine-one-one calls versus.
Self-initiated.
Yes, whether they're self-initiated, we don't, I don't care if you're out looking at a swimming pool. I mean, the calls that's, the MUD calls in to ask for help, domestic violence, whatever it is, uh, the amount of calls from the MUD to the city. Cause they're different.
Let me just address part of it and I'll let Chief handle the other part. So we are, um, we're a small city. So we didn't have our own GIS until recently and we didn't have our city broken up to a grid system. Dispatch also did not have us broken up into grids. So we are working with our city planner to develop those. So we will be able to break out the calls in the MUDs from the city. Now, as far as breaking it out additional from dispatch calls versus self-initiated calls, that part I don't know. I don't know how that would work. Maybe Chief can address.
I mean, I, I would have to get, get with the, with the IT on that. But I would think right now we could pull out, uh, self-initiated or actual call-ins. I believe we probably have that capability right now to be able to do that.
I think it'd be a real.
Yeah.
But if I'm understanding correctly, what you guys are saying is that when, when you've made, city has made statements that a large majority of the volume of calls is coming from the districts, that's just based on feel?
Yeah, it's, I mean, we, we don't have any, we don't have any kind of documentation that's showing that. But just knowing what the officers are doing day in and day out, uh, the majority of our work is at Magnolia.
Do you know when your peak hours are? Like when's your high school on?
Well, the, the day shift is getting a lot busier now, uh, than they were in the past, but no, we don't.
But there's not specifically that it supports any.
You know, Josephine, I think is very, very fortunate. Uh, we have twelve thousand people roughly that we service here. Bolt Springs has roughly twelve thousand people. Uh, we don't have near the call load of what Bolt Springs does. Uh, and I think that's due to the fact that we're kind of away from, from the city out here. So we don't have as much, much stuff going on. Uh, we're very fortunate that we don't have a lot of crime, uh, in Josephine. But I, but I've been trying to stay on top of it with personnel to where there is a visibility out there where it doesn't get to that point. Like, like Levon here recently has really started getting busier and busier on their call loads. Uh, and it's going to happen in Josephine too. But I would like to, you know, like, like a city of Plano, they have three hundred police officers. But you don't see a lot of stuff going on in Plano because, uh, then they're not, like he said earlier, they're not doing something all the time. But when something happens, they have the personnel that they need to be able to handle that call.
And so now the current contract says that we police them twenty-four hour, right? Yes, so that, I mean.
Just driving through whatever, that's still policing, right? And I'm not saying that's what, but that's part of the job. So just being a call versus being, driving through a neighborhood, whatever, that's still policing is from what I understood. And that's what we require. Now, if we changed it to where we provide you three officers and we only provide a certain amount of service, I mean, that would change some things, but that only affects the, the police, right? You still have the fire to deal with as far as your rates.
One thing I would like to see with this new contract and, or if you can find another way to help us, we still get people that come here and they don't realize that they live in a MUD district. Um, they insist that their public safety fees are covered under their taxes. So we sit with them and we explain and if we have to do it five times, we'll do it. Um, but if you could provide some education on the, the MUD's part to the residents about how that works, uh, we'd really appreciate it. And also, once we do get a contract that's agreeable to both sides, if we could put information out from your side as well as our side about, you know, how we came to this and, you know, these are the fees and why. We already have a flyer ready to go, um, for, these are the fees and why for this upcoming year. But we'd like to work with you on, you know, helping your residents understand. You know, I bought in, my, my own son bought his first house in, in Magnolia MUD. And he brought me his tax bill the first year and said, what is this? And I said, you didn't tell me you bought in a MUD. So I know the disclosures have hopefully improved a little bit since then. I think there were a couple of new laws, but I think people don't read them. Um, or maybe they're doing the electronic closings and they're just hitting the next button and doing initials. But a lot of people, um, I mean, a lot of people come in here and they don't understand why there's a separate charge. They just don't understand how it works.
And we've explained that to them over and over again, right?
If you could keep doing it, um, whatever it takes.
Facebook group, over and over again, I've explained that, right? And, and people are like, well, I didn't know. Well, I'm sure there's paperwork there because I did it. I had the same closing that they had, right? I went to the same DL Horton office, did it. You know who did my closing? Joe Holt. That's when I figured out there was something fishy there, right? Uh, he just clicked here, sign here, click, sign, oh, hang on, let me read this page. And, you know, unfortunately, not everybody reads everything. Some people just want to sign. But, uh, you know, when we, I'll, I've talked to a lady one night on the phone for an hour, explained to her, the MUD district, how MUD taxes work, why you're not within the city limits, why you can't run for city council, uh, why your, your mailing address, your mail comes from, uh, Roy City and not Josephine. Why Josephine post office is the only place with a Josephine zip code, uh, you know, three different post offices service Josephine. I spent an hour, hour and a half on the phone with her, explaining this to, time and time again to her. And no matter how many times we put it on the website and people hit the search function and go search for anything they want, it's already been talked to it dozens of times.
Well, let me say something real quick about the zip code while I'm thinking about it. We did manage to get our, our, uh, Josephine on a bill. It's passed the US House. It's got to go through the Senate. But we're on a list with several other Texas cities to get one single zip code for the entire Josephine area, which would include all of our ETJ and the MUDs to help simplify things. How that works out at the post office level, I have no idea. Um, but it would be in order that says, you know, post office, figure it out.
My house, seven-five-one-six-four or seven-five-one-seven-three, and I still get them.
Um, we, we know that part's a mess and, and the city's been working on it for years. But we did finally get our, our, um, city name on a bill and, and, you know, whether it goes through the Senate or not, I don't know. But at least we're, we've got our name on there and that's as close as we've come to getting that part straightened out. Um, we do, which is one more thing and then, um, I'll, I'll, I'll let it go. Um, as, as you tell yours, your residents how the MUD works, we also, when people sign up for utilities, we have them sign an acknowledgement that they understand. I don't know, we, I mean, we tell them and our, our clerks have a, a conversation with them as that happens. Um, but we, we still get folks up here that will come up here and, and will argue with us. So, um, anything we can do on both ends to help educate, because we really do want to embrace the MUDs. I think we have as much, as much as we can and, um, treat everyone that lives in the MUD just like a Josephine resident. So we refer to the area as the greater Josephine area. Um, and we talk about the twelve thousand we serve because, you know, we're thirty-five hundred in the city limits and the rest is outside city limits, which is really kind of unusual, especially for a town this small to serve that many outside city limits. But we want to work with you. We want to partner and we want to address your needs.
And like Micah said during the city council meeting, he said, great, you know, we want to, we want to come to a resolution over this and come to a, uh, a meeting point that we can both agree on versus going and trying to find another service provider, right? There's other service providers out there can do the same thing that city of Josephine does, but we don't want to do that. We'd rather try to fix the problem here, correct, Micah? I mean, that's, that's what he, he said during the city council meeting and I think we all as a board kind of concur that that'd be the easiest thing and, and what we'd really want to do.
And from the, just from the police side, uh, you know, we used to have a very good open communications with Magnolia and we knew about the events that go on.
Sometimes they're a little bit too open is part of the problem that we're having.
Yeah.
Y'all, y'all have tarnished the name of the police because of, here recently I was told by a resident, sorry. Here recently I was told by a resident that they didn't get a speeding ticket because the police officer told them that it was too expensive to hire a judge for the day. And I don't know the validity of the statement of the officer. But they were told that they didn't get a, a ticket that day because it was too expensive to hire a judge for the day for one traffic ticket or five traffic tickets or whatever the situation is, because the city of Josephine does not have their own judge. So you, you, you yourself and the city attorney stated that it's very important to keep certain things behind closed doors of what you can and can't enforce. But all that's been put out on the table now. So the, the, the reputation of the police department is not of any, um.
I don't think that's what he was talking about. I think he was talking about events and stuff.
Oh, right, but it was a perfect spot to add that in there if.
I mean, we can, if, if people will call, we, we can investigate anything that, that's being said and, and done, you know? Uh, we have body cams on all the officers out there now.
Hundred percent agree, but.
But so, uh, so that's kind of like a hearsay to me. I, I don't, I don't know how, how correct that really is without being able to.
It's a hundred percent hearsay.
Something like that. But what I'm saying, what I was saying and my point was with the police department, I, I want to do everything in the world I can to have a great relationship with y'all. And, and I've told Micah that several times, that I want to have a great relationship out there. Uh, we used to, the point I was getting at, we used to get called and, and, and they would tell us, hey, we're going to have fishing out here at the pond. Can we have some officers? Hey, can your officers do a safety deal out here? Magnolia and, and the Magnolia pages, whoever are behind those, I don't know, have completely shut the city off and, uh, and the police department off of, of, from the Magnolia side and from the Magnolia uncensored. And I've been told that somebody, you know, screenshotted something with the city. And so that's whoever done that, that's when they made the decision to, to cut us off. And, and you know, I've always been under the opinion if, you know, if, if, if your, if your mama wouldn't like it or if your preacher wouldn't like it or your boss wouldn't like it, then you probably don't need to post it. But, but to get cut off from that communication, uh, over someone screenshotting something, I, I, I took a very valuable tool away from the police department when we got blocked from all the pages out there, uh, because not everybody calls the police. And so we relied, even though we don't monitor that twenty-four, seven, uh, we did use that as a tool to know what was going on in Magnolia. We used to get calls, uh, to tell us about events that were going out there. And we had an officer a couple of weeks ago, they had a movie night out there and we knew nothing about it at all whatsoever. And he stopped by, but had we knew there was an event, it's just like block parties in the city. If there's a block party in the city, we're going to stop by and, and visit with the people. It's just like in Magnolia. If, if there's a movie in, in, in the park or whatever, we're going to stop by. Uh, but the communication has lacked and me and Micah talked about it. And, and, you know, and I said, well, I'll try to keep you in the loop and, uh, I sent him two, two different text messages and there was no response. And, and so, uh, I just feel like that, you know, everybody keeps pointing fingers about how I, the leadership and the police department won't do this and won't do that. I'm here as much as I can to, 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 to help y'all in any way I can. Uh, it's like the event for the, for the, uh, the child out there. That was a Saturday night. I came out, uh, I had officers out there. I did tell the lady that, you know, I can't commit officers. If we get emergency calls, we're going to have to go. Uh, but it just, it's just confusing to me that I keep seeing that people are, are saying that I don't want to, uh, be involved out there. And that's the, that's the feathers from the truth. But the communication has been cut off, but it's been cut off by Magnolia to us.
Well, we need to, um, part of, of that to happen. I mean, there's no mix of character.
No, I don't, I mean, it's apparent that, you know, that whether they're blocked on the Facebook page or whatever, moving forward, I mean, it's.
I feel like the Facebook page is kind of irrelevant and it, where it can be helpful for utilizing it for evidence or things of that nature. But for the record, we do also post on the Josephine Texas site too. So any events that we have for the food trucks, movie nights, things of that nature, we post it on all platforms.
It may be blocked.
If you're blocked by.
It's.
I can't see anything and make.
But this is, but we don't, but like this Josephine Texas page, like we don't, we, whatever we have access to that's out there, we post on all platforms, not just for Magnolia residents is what I'm trying to say.
I haven't been able to see it.
Okay. Well, we don't own that one, so.
If I block you on Facebook and I post something on a public page, you still can't see it.
Right. No, I understand. Yeah.
There is no personal page at all.
Well, I'm saying like if you have him blocked on.
Magnolia, is there a Magnolia page or I'm not on it? I don't know.
To Josephine and you still.
So, and, and I'll give some clarity maybe to that as, just so that way. Yeah, just, so essentially what happened was there was a meeting that we had in November. Um, and, uh, Lisa showed up with a binder of essentially screenshots, I assume, of people upset. And, um, I, I never saw any of them. Um, actually, I think she might've showed us one. Uh, but in regards to that meeting, um, there was, that was essentially relayed back to the citizens. I have no say in any of those pages. N- nobody on our board has any say to any of those pages. Um, we're not engaged or involved in any of those pages in the sense of controlling administrative rights or anything of that nature. And it was the determination of the people that manage those that if we're here trying to work through some issues and the only thing you can show up at that meeting is a stack of papers of people upset and letting you know that they're upset, there, there's no relevancy to finding a middle ground moving forward. Um, and they didn't want any, and that included everybody, not just police.
When they're shooting fireworks, you can't go on there and look at it, them posting videos.
I mean.
Yeah, we, like I said, we, we have no.
But if you, if you have a direct contact, I don't manage a lot of that. Um, and reaching out to me is great. Um, and to those points of the two texts, I was traveling and out of town, so I would have not. so I would have not been able to pass that on. But also, I'm not engaged in the Facebook groups typically anyway. Um, and so that being said, like, letting me know is is great, but I think like to the community is a whole different aspect.
Yeah, I just think that that if uh, if the board could talk to those groups and let them and let them see our side of it, of how we can't see what's going on out there, uh, would, it would be more beneficial to Magnolia if we saw that stuff and saw what was being posted. Because, you know, there were some, when when we still had access, you know, they they would say, hey, did y'all hear the woman screaming over on so-and-so street? Well, we never got a police call on it, but we happened to see it, and we follow up and try to figure out what's going on. So I mean, if y'all do have, where you could talk to those people and say, hey, here's, it would be the benefit of them being able to see this stuff. I have, I don't have no clue who it is.
Well, if any Facebook page, they have a list of admins.
I can't even get in and see it.
He's.
Block me.
Yeah, you can't, when you search it up, you can't, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you don't want him doing your IT digging anyway. So, all right, are y'all, I guess, are y'all open to starting the dialogue on a new mud agreement, or are y'all willing to start that?
Yeah, I think what I've heard is there's a lot of work that can be done to repair the relationship between the police department and the residents of the district. Um, but to that end, maybe we start with just a basic, we can, there's two ways to do it, and Lisa, I'd like your opinion. So one way would be to do just a basic term sheet, that's just a bullet point outline of, you know, changes that we would like to see, and then we can have feedback back and forth, figure out if there's to common ground there. And if there is common ground, then we can move forward with a new agreement, or we can just draft a new agreement and then.
I I think we start.
Go back and forth, trading the big papers, it's up to you.
I think we start with the bulleted points. I think that would be a good place, so we don't have to redraft it over and over.
Thank you.
So I think uh, Chief and I can bat it around a little bit. If if we think we've covered it, then we can, you know, address it with Rob, Mayor, whoever else, and then maybe come up with a an agreement going forward from there.
Okay.
Then bring it to to each board.
Can you have one last question when it comes to?
So this was one of the um, one of the agendas with the projections of your, for this next year. And on the second page, it has the revenue projections for upcoming year remain conservative. Key factor increase of mud public safety fee using the cost recovery module model. The estimated revenue is fifteen million roughly. Um, how does that pertake to what these fees and stuff are? Because when I look at this from the outside in, it sounds like you're trying to get an additional fifteen million from your mud tax. Am I looking into it that way?
I don't think so.
Because to me, the cost recovery model is you're going back and you're saying, we're not gonna ask for this this amount upfront, but we're gonna get this over a period of time.
We're we're only giving you the public safety budget for one year, and that's all we're charging for. Breaking it out per month. So I'm not sure what that number is other than the uh, maybe the general fund or something. I I'd have to look at it to see what it's referencing. I think that's the overall revenue, not not um, public safety revenue. It's not public safety, and it probably should have a separation between the two statements.
All right, so we have an agreements on the, we're gonna work on that. All right. Anything else before we close this out?
I just have one question regarding the increases. We had two this year. Is that gonna be a standard moving forward where we're having multiple? Because like you said, there's no annual budget review. And I think that probably should have been done before. Because we, my my thing is, is there's a lot of families that live paycheck to paycheck. There's a lot of families that can't afford the significant pay increase or the significant rate increase that's coming, right? They're making cuts in other places. If this is just for this year, and then next year there's two more or four more because there was no annual budget like review like you stated, what, how can a family anticipate what their charge is going to be in two years? Five years? Ten years? There's no way to know any kind of projected.
I don't know that we know on the city side either. So some of those costs, um, you know, cost of living, or if we're keeping up with salaries or we do hire hire additional people, all that's decided as we work through the budget season. I don't wanna do it in mid-year either. I mean, if we could just stick to the once a year, unless there's just some crazy reason why we have to do it mid-year, um, I would like to only do it, you know, maybe in May.
Procedures whereby, we're gonna talk about budgets, um, and then have yearly changes to the price.
And the goal would be for you all to have, you know, a a seat at the table in that conversation. So as the district is carrying, you know, as you mentioned, seventy percent of the burden, then you should also have, you know, an opportunity to give feedback and be heard as well.
And every meeting is is open, so public comments are at every meeting, whether it's budget season or not.
Sure.
So. I think an opportunity to sit down and actually have an open dialogue about the budget, um, rather than just speaking for thirty minutes in a non, you know, back and forth dialogue.
What about the, and I'll kind of end it with this. What about like the level of service if we are having issues, things of that nature? What's the best route that the city would like to see? Um, because, I mean, as I'd said, I've got several other open records that there are concerns behind, um, and I'd like to see them addressed.
So what do you say, what are you talking about, like, I guess, like a complaint or something? Is that where, because we have a, I mean, as far as file, like, they have complaints where you can come up and file a formal complaint. Is that what you're talking about, or?
If that's what.
Or just saying service overall?
Yeah, in general. If there's any issues or concerns or anything, do you want it to be a formal complaint uh, and tagged with?
I don't just talk to, you know, even the lieutenant or the vice.
Yeah, I wish we.
And if you don't get a resolve at that point, you can contact me.
I mean, I I just wish we would have a a more open communication uh, than we have right now. Just just reach out and and call me, email me. Uh, like I said, I've offered to come out to your meetings uh, each time. Uh, if I can't be there, I'll have a representative out there. Uh, because I do want to truly have an open communication with y'all.
Well, I think the concern that I'm specifically like thinking in regards of, which I haven't received everything back, so I'm still waiting, uh, but um, specifically have to do with like, potentially could be an increased cost because of more costs to certain departments um, due to maybe potential accidents, things of that nature, is not following policies or procedures. So my question would be like, how would be, how would you like that to be followed up on?
Probably through, um, I would go through Lisa first, correct?
That's fine. I I don't know that we have a specific procedure for that, but you're welcome to to contact me anytime.
I mean, you can contact me, but, you know, I'm gonna be slow to get back to you for one. I'm just gonna be honest, because I'm working, and it'd be either Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, whenever I can sit down with you. But, I mean, however you wanna go about it, I don't, doesn't matter. If you email me, I'll answer you, but it won't be immediately.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just didn't know if there was a specific set of procedures that y'all had.
Yeah. I would rather you not, what, I mean, you can, but then once it becomes a walking quarrel and somebody responds to that email in an open, you know? Um, if you wanna blind copy everybody, that's fine, I don't care. Um, but we just have to be careful of, you know, somebody responding and then becomes a walking quarrel.
So, I have never heard.
Yeah.
Something you can happen, but I've never heard uh, us just flat saying we're not.
But now, if it's just a, you know, like, just say you're wanting to email about an issue or whatever, yeah. I mean, if you wanna email that, we get people that email the council all the time. Um, but just know that we're not gonna resp, we better not respond to the group, you know?
Yeah, yeah. No, that makes sense. Like I said, I was just curious if there was a procedure that y'all have.
I mean, we're, I'm just, we're just trying to be as open as we can to be as helpful as we can. So, you know, whatever route makes it easier for y'all and us to 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 communicate and and whatever open record you want, I mean, it's all there, you know? So, anything else? Yeah. I appreciate y'all showing up, and um, I'm glad we had this conversation and got to put some faces to to names and uh, look forward to, you know, probably in the next couple of weeks, getting back together or whatever, so. Do we need a motion, Rob? Do we don't? All right, all in favor? So this meeting's adjourned.